Welcome to the regular meeting of the Terre Haute City Council. It is a little bit after six o'clock, Thursday, March 1st, 2018. We begin every regular meeting with a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance, which tonight will be led by Councilman Morris.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilperson Aller.
Present.
Councilperson Azar.
Present.
Councilperson Carson.
Present.
Councilperson Devon.
Here.
Councilperson Elliott.
Here.
Councilperson Garrison.
Here.
Councilperson Morris.
Here.
Councilperson Nassar.
Present.
Councilperson Nation.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you all for joining us this evening. We start off our regular meetings with 30 minutes of time for public comments. So if you wish to address the council, now is your opportunity to come up to the podium. Please give your name and address for the record if you choose to do so.
My name is Donald Hyde. Live at 1411 Popper Street. I have been coming to these meetings for the last six months because I believe that the last election in 18 brought about it. It was a terrible time in our country and we're on a crossroads. And you, I would admit, since I've been here, I've made decisions to open up your medium exchange and hear from the public. You're communicating. But communicating alone is not enough. We used to have communications with debates and all that, but we've taken it down even lower than that. For instance, again, this is to show me that you yourself have ability to get information. When was the last time a city map of Terre Haute was made? You know, I'm not talking about what was made in 2000 or the 90s and we've updated it or whatever. When was the last time a true city map showing every part of the city, all the zigzags that are in the city? That if you're in this part, you're in the city, you pay city taxes. If you're outside that, you're in the county, you pay county taxes. When was the last time that was made? And you guys were always talking about bringing business here, bringing opportunity here. Wouldn't that be one of the first things you'd want to hand to a business as a free sample is a map of your city showing? And on this map, it should be a public map. So it should have where the city hall is, where the courthouse is. It should have where all the public buildings are. It should have where all the schools are, both elementary all the way to college. It should show that it's a viable community. Now, I've been to the library. I've been to the place where the maps were made. I'm sorry, the last map I heard was made was sometime in the 90s. It was 20 years, a generation has gone by, and there's been building of new neighborhoods. We've moved the city boundaries around and had court costs move. We won some battles and we lost battles. They didn't get to be part of the city, but we won some of them too. I personally have lived here all my life. I could not, if I wanted to, with a gun to my head, draw where the city boundaries are right now. And I don't think I'm alone. The city council, though, that's one of your jobs. That's not one of those things that's somebody else's job. Your job is to educate the public on basic things. One of the basic things would simply be, where's the city limits at? Where are you in the city when you're not in the city? And what exactly have we built? What has the city of Terre Haute built? Parks, schools, playgrounds, health places, public places, libraries? All that would be what's needed to be on that map. Not sell side things to this business or that business or this business and have their put on there. No, no. This should be a city map showing where all the public places are. Again, I'm not preaching. I don't care, but I think you ought to care. I think you all ask yourself, is there such a map? And if there's not, why isn't there? When can we get one? When can we make one? I think that's a fair point to be made. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers, Paul Thrift. Councilman Azar, bringing the meaning to the word arm twistings. Hope you're all right there. Anyway, appreciate you having me here tonight and a 40-minute opportunity to speak. I'm here representing Terre Compete, a group of private sector business folks that have come together that interest in our community. As I believe you're aware, spent some time and resources to put together four study teams to study four different things and our community issues that we felt were important and worthy of study. And over the next three months, tonight and then in April and May, I'll come update you on where we are with some of those reports so that you're aware. I was here in the fall and updated on the assessment report, and I'll do, give you an update on that next month, and then an update on the fire report in the beginning of May. Tonight, I wanted to deliver to you the report and just give you a brief summary and, of course, answer any questions on the study team that studied the wastewater treatment plant. This was identified through our surveying of stakeholders in and outside of city government and community leaders as an issue that came up frequently that warranted looking into that asset, how it's being used, utilized, and managed. And so the study team that came together was comprised of Steve Witt, Andy Hendricks, Norm Lowry, Beth Teblin, Dottie King, Mark Fuson, and Brian Duncan. And of course, Earl Elliott chaired that study team. And they did the deep dive, spent a lot of time, had assistance from some very capable consultants who have been involved in analysis and also sales of municipal utilities. And so they had a lot of data to study and spent a good deal of time studying that. Ultimately, the recommendation that you'll see in this report, if you've not viewed it already, and it has been made public, was to run a process to analyze the options there and ultimately issue an RFP for proposals to sell that utility and to at least see and have the council and city understand what was on the table and what was available for the sale of that asset. And so in looking at that, there's a lot of factors that go into that. The city can put any parameters that they want on that sale to help shape what that looks like going forward. So protection for employees, recognition of unions, rates, and the valuation tied up in that asset. And that is an asset of the city's. And so the valuation of that can be determined by saying, we want rates to be capped at X or no more increases than X. We want pilot to be X. We want so much upfront. We want so much over time. And so it's basically a math equation of the valuation of those payment streams and what guidelines and parameters you want to set. So if you want to guarantee rate increases won't exceed a certain amount for the rate payers, that can be factored in. If you want a pilot to continue on it so much with increasing so much a year, that can be continued in. A lot of flexibility can be built in, and those parameters can be put forth in the proposal that you'll get back from the private proposers or bidders. There's a lot of expressed interest in this. There's been at least six private sector parties step up as they've been made aware that this conversation was going on to say that they're interested. We're told it's a good time to be exploring this as there's a lot of capital in the market seeking these type of opportunities. There's a lot of these type of transactions going on. And so why would the city of Terre Haute consider this? As I mentioned, this is an asset of the city. Whether we are managing it to full efficiency or not, you know, that would have to be judged and could be in the eye of the beholder. But a private sector operator that has scale beyond one community brings a lot of efficiencies of that scale to the operations of that, a lot of expertise that they can spread over many different communities, resources, buying power, knowledge, and so on. And they also bring a different motivation to the bottom line to operate that in an efficient manner. And so all of that can be explored. And what the recommendation is, is simply to explore it. So at least the city has a firm understanding and its citizens and our rate payers have a firm understanding of what the options are. And so there's no doubt in my mind and the finding of the committee that there are operational efficiencies to be had there. And we could set ourselves up better going into the future for protection of the rate payers and also for, to maximize the benefit financially to the city by looking at a privatization or a P3, public-private partnership, but basically a sale of this asset. There are other arrangements that can be explored, such as management agreements and the like, and those could be put on the table and explored and have the right people inform us as to the pros and cons of each of those setups. There are folks that have guided other communities through this, several in Indiana. Recently, Scranton, Pennsylvania, was one that we're very aware of because the consultant we were using had managed that process. They committed very similar to us, had pretty deep financial woes, had experienced mandated improvements, had rate increases that were significant, and they were looking at how do we mitigate this and bring some efficiencies. And they were able to experience a sizable windfall and also guarantee fairly flat rates going forward as they sold their asset, their wastewater treatment plant. So there's a lot that goes into this. From here, the recommendation is to form an exploratory committee to explore this. The mayor has expressed support for this and has informed me that he is going about forming a committee to look into this. And so what we would encourage the council to do is to be an active participant in that. I'm, I guess, very much encouraging you to be an active participant in that. We believe it's very important that it be an open and inclusive committee that's put together, that has representation from the council, of course, the administration, the wastewater treatment plant, and also a private sector representation so that as this process goes through a process, that we can have assurances or a comfort level that we have looked honestly and openly at this and the community has a full understanding. Any process, and we were provided examples of the materials and the public processes that had, the public, I guess, educational processes that had gone about in Scranton and in Westfield and others, about the educating the public and the different constituencies about what this means, how it looks, what the options are. And so there's a proven track record of going about this to inform people so that the rate payers and the citizens and, of course, the decision makers like yourself have a full understanding of what's going on and what the options are. So our encouragement is that this process be open and that the right, I guess, the right representation be on this committee. And we would volunteer to put some of our members on that if it were appropriate so they could continue to provide some leadership in that. And certainly, some of these have spent some time getting to know this, and I think it could be beneficial, particularly people who understand how deals come together and look at this with an open and informed mind, along with, again, the different constituencies that we think it's important to have representation on a committee. So I know I said a lot fairly quickly, but I want to be respectful of your time. I'd be happy to entertain any questions, and I do have copies of the written report. If you would like, I'll leave those behind and you can pass those around, so. Councilman Morris?
Just two quick questions. In a contract that say that we do this and we can dictate fees and stuff, how long is a normal contract like Stanton? I mean, did they do a 20-year? You can't raise fees only to this certain level for 20 years, or can it be longer?
It can be much longer than that, yes.
Is that right?
It can extend out many, many years, 50, 60 years.
So what would the process be for doing this changeover, doing this? I mean, does it go to Board of Works, then to us, or to the mayor, or what is it, Senate Station Board?
Don, I am not informed enough to tell you exactly the legal process. There is a process, obviously, has to go through the city. It certainly is going to require the administration to push it. And I know that there's a role for the Board of Works and the city council, as we've been told, but I don't want to represent to you that I understand exactly the legal process. The Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission has to approve this. And so as we understand it, even at a fast pace, it's a good two-year process at a fast pace. The first step, and we were given an outline of how this process would look, the first step is to have an appraisal done so you at least get an idea. It doesn't really tell you the value because ultimately it's through a bidding process of having interested parties submit proposals. And we're told that many times, most times, it far exceeds the appraisal. But that'd be the first step. And then obviously going through just an exploratory phase and then ultimately issuing requests for proposal, going to the state for their review and blessing, and then also the local approvals that it would have to have.
So it wouldn't be a referendum on a, for the citizens to vote on it, but be through the administration?
To my understanding, no, it does require Board of Works and the city council as you're, if it's a sale, you're transferring property.
Thank you. I yield. I find this very exciting, very positive. Thank you for doing this. Yeah, I yield. I'd like a copy of that.
No further questions, council? Thank you all. Thank you very much. We still have some time to decide the public comments if anybody would like to speak.
Hi, my name's Brian Bennett. I'm a resident of Terre Haute. I spoke to you all at your meeting in early February. And at that meeting, I mentioned that in light of the public forum that took place in Claver Girl at the end of January, in which some concerns were raised by some of you all about the exchange of, or the mayor providing timely information to you all, a lack of good communication between the council and the mayor, that the mayor might consider attending some of these meetings. Now, since then, I came across this curious exchange in the mayor's Ask the Mayor column that appeared on February the 14th, where they, in that column, the question was posed to the mayor. Some city leaders hosted a forum a couple of weeks ago and found out some city residents want more transparency and better working relationships between the mayor's office and the city council. Would you agree? To which the mayor responded, "We couldn't be more transparent. I don't really know what their need is. They never approached me. I was not invited. Sometimes I think people get confused, the roles of all the pieces here and not on city council. If there's issues with transparency with me, bring it to my attention." Now, what, I find kind of curious in that is this remark, "we couldn't be more transparent." I suppose that's the royal "we." But this is a comment made by the mayor who withheld from you all the information about the $8 million reduction in your budget, that the city budget that has to be made. He found out about this in February, and you all found out about it in August, was it, six months later? Now, I'm looking at an article written by Dave Taylor entitled, "New Panel Forum to Discuss Public Projects in Vigo County." This appeared in the Tribune Star on November the 9th, 2017. The article begins recognizing the number and cost of major public projects facing Vigo County taxpayers. The 10-member panel of public officials has begun meeting as the Community Strategic Finance Committee. The group is working to create a communication plan to be proactive in educating one another and taxpayers on Vigo County's financial decisions. Terre Haute Mayor Duke Bennett said, "In an effort to keep our citizens informed about how all of this works, we sense an opportunity to be even more transparent," according to the release. "The committee is a way of getting all of the major players together. Although we are required to work individually as separate entities, we recognize that veteran is this community, the team effort." So that was in November. I have not heard anything about this Community Strategic Finance Committee. Does that committee still exist?
Councilman President?
Yeah, it still exists. We are meeting March 9th to go over some information that we received from Ombudsmen and Associates to discuss where the professors from both universities came up with their information. And we're going to probably extend an invitation to one of those university presidents to, or professors, to talk about, you know, the findings with the initial article that Mr. Taylor wrote from the Tribune Star.
So, and that's the first meeting of this committee?
No, this would be the third one, I believe.
And was information about what transpired at the other meetings, has that been shared with the?
We've released that to the media. I know the Tribune Star did one article about it, but each time we've met, we've sent out many minutes to the media to explain what we're discussing.
Okay, good. Well, I'll just, in my comments, by mentioning once again that if the mayor is serious about being more transparent, then this would be a good opportunity for him to demonstrate that if he attended some of your meetings rather than the meetings he has at the pipe company during regular, when most of us are working.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak?
Mr. President?
Yes, just one issue.
Just Brian's statements made me think of a question that should be easily answered by everybody here. Do we have the December 2017 financial statements yet?
The statements are on Gateway. I got them yesterday off of Gateway, but we've not been sent anything that I'm aware of from the Controller's Office. I think the mayor's planning to speak next week on the, was that the budget resolution or the 17 financials? I'm not exactly sure what he's planning to talk to us about.
Thank you. I wanted to make sure I hadn't missed that email.
And I did, I did email asking for, you know, those statements, the same statements we get every 11 months to get for the 12-month. And I sent that, I think, yesterday or the day before.
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and end public comments. We'll move on. Corrections to the journal?
There are none.
Communication from the mayor?
There are none.
Report from city officials?
You do have one in front of you. It is a report from the Redevelopment Commission. It's their annual report to you, which will be placed online tomorrow on the website.
Report from Board of Public Works and Safety?
There are none.
Reports from standing committees?
There are none.
Reports from non-standing committees?
There are no non-standing committees.
Items previously tabled?
Resolution 2, 2018 Designating Navy and Area Tomley Identified 3400 East Fort Harrison Road, Terre Haute, Indiana, is economic revitalization area for the purpose of a 10-year real property tax abatement. Tredagar Film Products, this is for confirmation.
Petitioner?
Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Lou Britton, and I represent the petitioner, Tredagar Film Products, US LLC. Also here this evening is Sean Bauer, who's the Global Director of Operations for Tredagar. If any of you have any questions that I can't answer. As you may recall, we discussed this at your, I can't say, it's not been a full month ago because we don't operate under that schedule anymore, but three weeks ago or whatever it was, at your last voting meeting, I guess I'll say. Tredagar currently employs 121 persons at its Terre Haute facility with annual salaries of $6.75 million. This project is anticipated to create 34 new jobs with a payroll of approximately $1.897 million. The projected cost of real property improvements is $8.835 million, and the projected cost of personal property is $16.8 million. The project received preliminary approval at your last meeting. Notice of this meeting, which is a public hearing, has been published. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer. Otherwise, it's a request for a 10-year abatement on both the real and the personal property. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this? Please give your name and address for the record.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Sarah Dillon. I'm from 544 Frontier Court. I talked to Mr. Britton just a few minutes ago. By the way, Martha, thank you for asking my question last month. I'm willing, and I discussed this with him if it is at all possible in regards, I'm going to be discussing both of the bills, but I'm willing to offer an olive branch somewhat. I'm not opposed to the building itself, which is the resolution we're discussing now, number two. But I've talked to some of my environmental colleagues about Resolution 3 in regards to, instead of the equipment that they're wanting to set up, that they're wanting to purchase for this project, instead to try to get product, like the manufacturing equipment that would make sustainable products, biodegradable, that kind of fun stuff. So in regards to number two, I support that. In regards to number three, I would probably hope to postpone until they can probably get new equipment. I yield.
Thank you, Sarah.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from public?
Why he's standing beside me, I'd like him to go into further detail exactly with her question, what they intend to make there, so we have a better understanding of the risks involved and the opportunities involved.
I'll address the last question first, I guess, since the questioner is here and the other one's not. The products to be made are feminine hygiene and adult hygiene products. The actual primary part of the product to be manufactured is the plastic film for that product. Addressing the questions raised by the first, I'm sorry, I didn't write her name down, by the first person, they don't, they, one, have no need for the new building. by the first person, they don't, they, one, have no need for the new building if they don't have any equipment to put in it. Secondly, this project, as we discussed before, was cited in Terre Haute as a result of an internal competition among Tredagar plants, assuming that they can achieve an abatement for this project. The plan is to locate it here. If they cannot, the plan is to locate it elsewhere. With respect to, I'm not exactly sure what we are being asked to do, but as you might expect, given the kind of product that this plastic film is used for, biodegradable does not work very well, because it will start degrading before you want it to. No one makes biodegradable film for this product. The film itself is recyclable, and the film is recycled. Any waste that's produced is recycled. The product itself is recyclable, although, in all fairness, it's not likely to be recycled because of the nature of the product. Thank you.
Any questions from council?
If there are no further questions, I move to confirm Resolution 2, 2018.
Second?
It has been moved to confirm Resolution 2, 2018 by Councilman Azar and seconded by Councilman Nasser. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes. Next item, Michelle?
Thank you.
Resolution 3, 2018 Designating an Area Comleged Identified as 3400 East Fort Harrison Road, Terre Haute, Indiana, as an economical revitalization area for the purpose of a 10-year personal property tax abatement, Tredagar Film Products. This is also for confirmation.
Petitioner?
Again, Lou Britton. Sean is still here. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer. This is the corollary to the resolution which you just passed. Thank you.
Would anybody from the public like to speak on Resolution 3, 2018? Council?
Mr. President? If there are no further questions, I move Resolution 3 be confirmed.
Second?
It has been moved by Councilman Azar to confirm Resolution 3, 2018, and seconded by Councilman Morris. All of those in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Items on second reading?
There are no appropriations, general ordinances, or there are none.
Items on first reading?
There is only a special ordinance, and that is Special Ordinance 1, 2018, amending Special Ordinance 36, 2017, engineering department salaries.
Petitioner?
Mr. President, members of the council, Chuck Ennis, city engineer. This is an amendment to special ordinance, or our salary ordinance from last year, to make it consistent with our approved budget. The year before, we had taken monies from two different funds to pay our forester, and last year, we consolidated that position into the non-reverting account, and salary ordinance never got changed, so I just need to reflect that change. I have to answer any questions.
Is there anybody from the public who would like to speak on Special Ordinance 1, 2018?
He said the magic word, "forester." I don't know much, but I'm an Eagle Scout. I know about trees, and when they talk about planting trees, they're talking about forestry. I think that we are going to have to take a serious look at the way we're planting trees in this city. Have you been down to the Wild Beach River lately? Seriously, today, I went there. I have slowly, over the last 10 years, saw the number of trees at our city park go down, down, to practically not exist now, and what few tall trees are left are submerged in water. I don't know if they're going to survive, so that means that our park is going to be treeless toward the river. Where, you know, I don't understand that, and I also don't understand some of the other parks where they're planting trees. They don't seem to last very long. I live on a city block, and in 2000, we planted a bunch of trees down Poplar Street, and they literally planted 200 of them. I wish you'd go down and count. By the way, that was a million dollars worth of trees were planted in 2000 on Poplar Street, from 7th Street to 19th. We're not even talking 25th, we're just talking about 19th. Go down there and count how many of those trees are left standing, and the ones that even in my house, they have this green fungus thing going on, and they're ever-treating. So, when it comes to forestry, I have a bone to pick. Doesn't mean I'm right, doesn't mean I'm wrong, but it does mean that we, and the taxpaying public, have questions, and nobody's answering them, or even raising the questions. So that's my only point. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public want to speak on Special Ordinance 1, 2018? Council? Councilwoman McCruss?
Yeah, thank you. Chuck, I'm a little confused. Do we have an urban forester now?
Yes.
Okay, and so we're just talking about where that money paid them is coming from?
Right.
Okay, and where is, can you explain that to me again?
We, last year, we paid him out of two different accounts, the engineering account and the non-reverting account. Now, we're paying him his complete salary out of the engineering non-reverting. We got it correct in the budget, but in last year's salary ordinance, we kind of missed that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I answered that, so thank you. That was my only question. Thank you.
Councilman Nation?
I know the answer to this, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Does this moving of money represent any raise for our esteemed urban forester?
No.
Yeah, okay. Thanks, Ayew.
Well, it's for willing to give one.
Councilman Nasser?
Chuck, did I hear you right? Did you say that this was, were we told to do this by the DLGF?
I don't think so. I think it just came, it just came up in the accounting office when they realized that they weren't matching.
Okay, and then, I think the forester does a great job, but maybe a lot of people in the public don't realize what they do. Is there any way you can give us a brief description of what they do?
In, not including the city parks or cemeteries, there are some 17,000 to 18,000 trees in the tree rows. It's the forester's job to basically manage those 17,000 trees, remove the dead ones, prune the ones that need to be pruned, and plant new ones. He works with Trees Incorporated and Tree Plantings, helps to coordinate locations for those, kind of right tree, right place. So, and he answers all the 311 calls we have on tree complaints.
I appreciate it. Ayew?
Mr. President?
Councilman Nation?
If there are no further questions, I move that we approve Special Ordinance 1, 2018.
I believe we have to.
Oh, yeah, wait, it's not that simple anymore, is it?
Not anymore.
Just remember, this is because of your General Assembly votes, not council rules.
Yeah, I withdraw my motion.
Mr. President? I'd like to make the motion that we vote on Special Ordinance 1 this evening to see the petitioner from coming back next week.
Second. Okay, Councilman Azar has made the motion that we vote on Special Ordinance 1, 2018, and it has been seconded by Councilman Nasser. All of those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, we can now vote on that.
Mr. President?
Councilman Nation?
I move that we approve Special Ordinance Number 1, 2018.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilman Nation that we approve Special Ordinance 1, 2018, and seconded by Councilman Nasser.
Mr. President?
Councilman Elliott?
Chuck is still welcome next week. I just want to make sure you know that. Thank you.
I'll go back real quick. It's been moved by Councilman Nation to approve Special Ordinance 1, 2018, seconded by Councilman Nasser. All of those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Passes. Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you.
Move to adjourn?
Are we done? Okay.
Move to adjourn?
It's been moved to adjourn by Councilman Azar, seconded.
How soon you back it?
Seconded by Councilman Morris. All of those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Meeting's...